Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November 6th Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to call forward George Laurie for an invocation. George, welcome again this morning.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Dare County Commissioners for allowing members of the North Dare Ministers Association to open each of your meetings with a prayer. Secondly, I want to offer my condolences on the recent passing of Jim Tobin. Jim provided deep insight and wise advice on numerous issues of importance to the Outer Banks, especially with regards to our waterways. Thirdly, I'd like to commend your efforts in the area of affordable housing, in spite of the pushback you are receiving from every municipality who wants it but not in their town. Lastly, thank you for continuing support for our local college of the Albemarle campus and the Outer Banks Hospital. You're all doing an excellent job, in my opinion. So I'd like to offer the following prayer. Blessed are you, Lord our God, sovereign of all, who has given us life, sustains us, and brought us to this season. We thank you and sing your praises for our lives which are in your hand and for our souls which are in your keeping. You are goodness, you are compassion, you have always been our hope. Be with these commissioners and others who serve Dare County on a daily basis. Guide them in what continues to be the challenge of a lifetime. Soften their hearts and open their minds so that every decision they make is the best one. Humble them to realize they are all human and make mistakes because the residents of Dare County will respect them even more. Almighty God, gracious with your light when our path grows dark, with your strength when we grow weary, and with your support when we falter in our resolve. King of the universe, you have commanded us to do your work for the betterment of the Outer Banks. May this be God's will, and God's people say amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Have a safe and blessed Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Years.
Thank you, George. Appreciate it. May we stand for the pledge. Before we get started, I just want to recognize Chairman of the Outer Banks Business Bureau, Tim Cafferty. He's here with us today. We will see Tim and Lee in just a moment on item eight. Tim, thank you for being here. Thank everybody for being here this morning. We've got some folks to recognize, and with that being said, I will turn it over to the county manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Okay, thank you, county manager. I have a few items this morning. Recently, November 2nd, last Thursday, the Outer Banks Association of Realtors hosted a property insurance forum, and Vice Chairman was there, Commissioner Ross, Commissioner Couch, and myself, the county manager, and our public information officer. A lot of homeowners are confronted with significant increases in insurance premiums this year, and Outer Banks Association of Realtors, always with Willa Kelly, has always been on top of insurance issues from flood to property, and they're now fortunate enough to have Donna Creef as their legislative person with that association as well. So we've got a lot of talent there. And they wanted to host this forum, and they brought in some folks from the Rate Bureau as well as Gina Hardy, who's the head of the Association, the North Carolina Association for Property, specifically wind. Yeah, NCIUA. Yeah, NCAUA. And, you know, with these soaring rates, you know, Willa's always been on top of trying to hold it down as much as she can and lobby on our behalf. And she basically, Willa said, what she's hearing is from folks is I'm going to be forced out of my home because of the cost of the property insurance, and I'm not going to be able to sell my house because certainly of the same reasons that the potential new owner would face. So some of the things that came out of that was what you really need to do is check your limits, make sure your limits are adequate so that you certainly are not in a potential coinsurance penalty phase if you don't have the proper insurance on your home. Check your deductibles, you know, read your policy. They also push fortified roofs are very, very helpful in getting some credits, but that can certainly be expensive. They will offer up to $6,000 if you want to replace your roof to have a fortified roof. And then talk to your agent, you know, have your agent look at some options for you. And with deductibles and different carriers, there are a lot of carriers out there. I can tell you, after being in the business almost 50 years, you need to read your policy, you need to look at it, and you need to shop it. There's potentials out there. A lot of primary carriers will X wind, they'll exclude wind, then you've got to buy a separate wind policy. There's very few companies out there that will offer wind. You end up having to buy a separate wind policy, but those are very limited as well. If you don't go to NCJUA for wind policy, then wind coverage out there is extremely hard to purchase. There are markets, but it ain't cheap, folks. So look at your policy, talk to your agent on a regular basis, and make sure your limits are there, and, you know, ask them, ask them for other options. We've also, Vice Chairman, myself, Commissioner Ross, were able to attend the Ninth Annual Tourism Summit that the Business Bureau held this year at the Ramada. Again, that was on Tuesday, November 2nd, or Thursday, excuse me. And let me just share some highlights. These are huge, folks. $1.97 billion in visitor spending in Dare County in 2022. I mean, that's phenomenal. We're ranked number four in the state, you know, we're up against the Mecklenbergs, the Wakes of the state. Here's the key: related tourism jobs. If you want to talk about housing, let me just throw some numbers out there with respects to tourism jobs. 12,030 across Dare County. That's a lot of folks, that's a lot of folks to be employing. State revenue tax from tourism just in Dare County, $66 million. Local tax revenue from tourism, $74.2 million. Astronomical numbers, unbelievable. Folks are coming to Dare County, and we're fortunate. We're a tourism-driven population here and community, so I only see that continuing to grow. Couple of things that are coming up, one in particular, probably you heard about this? Operation Green Light starts today, November 6th through the 19th, and that's to honor our veterans across this country. So if you can switch out your regular light bulbs outdoors, outside, put some green ones in there and support our veterans, share our veterans that you're thinking about them, you appreciate them, and like to see the whole county lit up in green. Along those lines, I want to thank the Vice Chairman in particular with all of his efforts with respects to the Wall That Heals. We're the very last stop, I believe, isn't that correct, Vice Chairman?
Yep.
We're the last stop on the tour. Dare County Veterans Advisory Council and our Vice Chairman, who's worked very, very closely with them, want to show our support for our veterans by greeting the Wall That Heals that will be traveling three, it's a three-quarter scale model of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial that's physically located in DC. And it's going to arrive here Tuesday, November 14th, 2023. I'm going to have the privilege of riding my Harley from, what is it, Columbia? I'm going to be riding with the rest of the boys from Columbia on my Harley and escorting that tractor trailer. I'm looking, I hope it ain't too cold, because I got to ride here all the way to Columbia, and then I got to turn around and ride back with them.
[Inaudible]
I might have to, but I'm looking forward to that. This trailer that transports the wall throughout the county will be escorted, as I've said, by jeepers. Our Commissioner House is a jeeper, and as well as the motorcyclist. And we'll come down 64 from Columbia through Mann's Harbor into town of Manio to the Soundside event here in Nag's Head, where it'll be set up from November 16th through the 19th.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, on that exact point, on the 14th of November, it will be arriving at about 2:00 or 2:30, crossing the causeway from Manio to Nag's Head. And we are asking everyone, anyone who can make it, we're going to line the streets, causeway 14th, 2:30 PM, if you can be there, we'll be there.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Ross. But a tracking link for the trailer, they've actually got that, that's going to be posted on www.darenc.gov/wall, and that'll come online at 1 o'clock on Tuesday to provide the greetings and for an up-to-date information on the location of the wall that heals as it makes its way along the route and into Dare County. So looking really, really forward to that event and having that here through the 16th, from the 16th through the 19th. Our veterans are extremely important to us, at least to me, knowing everyone else in this room. My dad was a Second World War veteran who landed in Normandy and came home and, daggone if his unit wasn't called up, he served on the front lines of Korea. So we've got many, many heroes out there, and he was certainly my hero. Along those lines, I want you to keep Cheryl House in your thoughts and prayers. Steve's wife, his father-in-law, her father was a veteran, served this country with honors, just passed away recently, so keep Cheryl and Steve in your thoughts and prayers. Not only that, Celebration of Life was handled on October 25th for Jim Tobin, who sat just to the left of Commissioner Ross here for a number of years on this board. Unprecedented what Jim accomplished with the task force. Never been done in this country was a public-private partnership to bring funds to build a bridge so that our fishermen could go to work. Unprecedented, unheard of, first of its kind in this country. I want you to keep Jim in your thoughts and prayers, especially Tammy, his wife, as Jim served this county with honors, and it was a privilege for me to be able to serve with him on this board. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence on behalf of Jim and Cheryl House's Thank you, everyone. County Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to the presentation of our service pins. First on our list is one that was left from last month and couldn't be here. Wendy Hall will be receiving her 15-year pin from Debbie Dutton.
Welcome this morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's nice to be here, thank you. So it is with great pleasure to present this 15-year pin to Wendy Hall. Wendy is our clinical nursing supervisor. She provides leadership to 10 staff members, including nurses and lab staff. Not only does she provide guidance to her staff, but she is an integral part of all clinic processes, to include providers, support staff, and our interpreters. The clinic is a very busy environment with various programs in which Wendy manages. Family planning, maternal health, child health, adult health, immunizations, communicable disease, to name a few, but there are several other programs as well, the list goes on. Wendy began with DHHS as the communicable disease nurse and was promoted to the clinic nursing supervisor in 2015. The communicable disease program is very complex and one of the harder programs that we manage. She has a vast knowledge of communicable disease and has maintained professional contacts at the state level to assist with our cases as necessary. Since her promotion, she not only manages the other programs, but she is also the backup nurse for communicable disease. There are over 85 communicable diseases that require mandatory reporting to the state of North Carolina, some within seven days, some within 24 hours, and still others immediately. I value Wendy for her knowledge, expertise, and leadership that she brings to the team. When she is not putting out fires, proactively managing her staff, overseeing clinic operations, providing surveillance and investigating communicable disease, you can find Wendy on the beach, hunting for sea glass and shells, fishing, or spending time with her adorable two-year-old grandson, Ren. Wendy is a ray of sunshine and the best cheerleader who supports her staff no matter what. She has great respect for her team and coworkers, and in turn, she is highly respected by them. Wendy recently received recognition and a certificate of achievement as a North Carolina credentialed public health nurse. This involved hours of preparation and study. What an accomplishment. Wendy is a great leader, and I appreciate her for all that she does for DHHS. So this is the first 15. 15 to come.
Just halfway. Thank you.
Next, if Carol Copeland would come forward to receive her 15-year pin from Lee Brinkley.
Good morning, ladies.
Good morning. Good morning. So 15 years ago, Dare County acquired a gem of an employee. Carol came to DSS after a 20-plus career at Albemarle Mental Health. Their loss was certainly our gain. Carol and I were both working in the family services unit during emergency intake and started just two months apart. It was a long two months without her. As a young 22-year-old social worker in my first real job, Carol was a huge role model and an influence for me. I was fortunate to work closely with Carol as a teammate for almost five years, and after a short break in another unit, I was fortunate to, I was fortunate enough to become Carol's supervisor when I took over the family services unit. She was and is an amazing teammate, and she's an even more amazing employee. As her coworker and supervisor, I absolutely value Carol's knowledge and experience. She is steady calm in the middle of our rough seas and awfully sometimes stormy days. Carol rarely gets flustered and isn't one to show her stress. She has extensive relationships in our community and is well-respected by many. When we have a tough case, Carol is not afraid to do some creative thinking and help meet the needs of our community members. She serves on local boards as part of her job and brings extensive knowledge and a caring heart to those roles as well. Currently, she serves on the executive board for OBX Room in the Inn and has previously served on the Beach Food Pantry Board. Carol puts in long hours at work and is always willing to help a coworker. She's a supervisor's dream. She makes it easy. On top of all of that that she does at work, Carol serves her church family tirelessly and enjoys being a mom and a grandma. I'm personally so very thankful to Carol for all that she has taught me and all that she does to make my job easy. I'm a better social worker because of her. Carol has committed to a few more years with us. This is her first 15 with us. I won't ask you for 15 more, that's not nice. But I will ask you for the rest of your eight. Is that what I get? Okay, so I get eight more. So when you do leave, there will certainly be huge shoes to fill. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's your first 15.
Next is Laura Willingham. She'll be receiving her 15-year pin from Kelly Fleming.
Ladies, welcome.
Good morning. It is both an honor and a privilege to be here this morning to present Laura Willingham with her 15-year pin. I'd like to tell you a little bit about Laura and what she does for our department. Laura has worked as a public health education specialist, health education supervisor, and currently serves as human service planner. Laura is dedicated and has a passion for public health and frequently shares how much she loves her job. She oversees accreditation for the health division, which is a four-year process. Laura makes sure each staff person knows what accreditation requirements they are responsible for, trains staff on the requirements, notifies those staff of any changes at the state level, provides deadlines and reminders, and helps any staff meet their requirements that may need assistance. She also serves as our region's accreditation coordinator representative and makes recommendations to the state on requirements and standards. This previous cycle was extended to six years due to COVID. So in our most recent North Carolina local health department accreditation assessment that just wrapped up at the beginning of this year, our agency received a perfect score. We met all 41 benchmarks in 147 activities. This is a remarkable accomplishment that our department was able to achieve under Laura's guidance and leadership.
Wait a minute. 100%?
Yes, with honors, yes.
I'm not sure that that's happened before.
It has never happened before, as far as our knowledge, yes.
I just want to make sure everybody got that. That was no small thing.
Huge, yes. Thank you, thank you for stressing that, yes. Laura also serves as our quality improvement coordinator and chairs our committee. She serves on a regional quality improvement team and works on regional projects as well. She also serves as our Healthy Carolinians of the Outer Banks Coordinator and manages our Healthy Communities grant. In a recent audit from the state, Laura received glowing feedback from our consultant, who went on to say she wished everyone did it like Laura and Dare County. In addition to completing numerous assessments for and on our department each year, she also oversees our employee wellness initiatives and runs multiple events for our agency each year. One of those events is a walking challenge, which is currently going on and has 125 staff participating. The challenge builds unity and morale while getting staff active and providing an opportunity for staff to get a wellness point. Laura is one of the first people I met when I came to work for Dare County. The first thing I remembered about her was how incredibly kind and generous she was. To this day, I continue to be impressed by her kindness, work ethic, and dedication to those around her. Laura is a caring and dependable team member who is respected by her peers. Don't just take my word for it. Here are a few quotes from people who work with her every day. "I've had the pleasure of working with Laura for about 12 of her 15 years. I am proud of her dedicated, compassionate, and accomplished service to our community. She's a true public health champion." Laura was so helpful to me when I first started working in health education, and she continues to be. She's always so willing to answer any question I may have and offers such positive feedback. Her energy and enthusiasm are amazing to be around, and I'm grateful to be able to work with her. Laura is very dependable and hardworking. She takes great pride in this. Laura is always willing to help whenever she can. I remember when I got hired years ago, she took me under her wing and helped me in any way she could. Then the last one, which is my favorite, Laura Willingham is a loyal employee who pays great attention to details and truly cares about the quality of her work. She keeps herself out of the spotlight and makes preparations behind the scenes so that her coworkers can be successful. Laura's greatest skill is her ability to budget her time. She juggles her work and her personal life with extraordinary courage. She is an incredible mother, daughter, sister, wife, and friend who rarely takes time for herself. Laura is a blessing to our community. So Laura, I know I speak for us all when I say we'd love for 15 more years with you, but we'll take what we can get. So here's the 15, and hopefully 15 more. Thank you.
I just wanted to say one thing real quick, is that I have a Master of Education in Health Sciences, and I feel extremely privileged and grateful to be able to work in the field that I studied in, in the field that I love, and get to live in such a beautiful place at the same time. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Laura, thank you. I think we just got 15 more-year commitment there.
Next, if Ashley Johnson would come forward to receive her 20-year pin from Jenny Collins.
Good morning, ladies.
Good morning. This is Ashley Johnson. Ashley started her career in EMS very early on. She had an interest in it and actually attended an EMT class when she was in high school. And once she graduated and was at least 18, because you have to be in North Carolina, we hired her in November of 2003, soon after she graduated. In 2008, she advanced her EMT to the paramedic level, and she not only had North Carolina certification, but national registry certification as that. And 2016, she competed in an internal assessment and has been assigned to Dare MedFlight, which she has been one of our helicopter paramedics and the most tenured paramedic that's actually on the helicopter as we speak. So that's not a way to say that you're old, it's just she's been on it for a while. And after being assigned to MedFlight, we give the paramedics at least a year to get their flight paramedic certification. Ashley knocked it out in just a few months after being there. So she is very driven and very hardworking. As well as she does on the medical care of things, what is even bigger in her is her heart, and that is she ensures that children of this community don't go without during Christmas time. She's extremely active in the Toys for Tots campaign and very active in coordinating things with, or assisting coordinating things with Lights of Christmas, which is a public safety event and making sure families in need are, their needs are met for that Christmas time. She not only does shopping for those Christmas lists, she donates countless hours of her time to ensure the store for Toys for Tots, to ensure Christmas gifts are wrapped for the Lights of Christmas process, and to make sure that everything goes well. In fact, just this weekend, she sent me an email for both of those events so that we can start to coordinate additional employees who will volunteer their time in making sure that they're out doing those activities. Her birthday is typically at the time that we're delivering the Lights of Christmas, and you would never know. She doesn't make a peep about it because her focus is making sure that Christmas comes and not on her own birthday, and that's just part of that selfless sacrifice that she does. So Ashley is married. Her husband is with the Dare County Sheriff's Office. He's outside wrangling their youngest of three in the car. She says, like, I don't think that we need to have her in with the meeting. But she's very dedicated, and for that, Ashley, I'm excited to give you your 20. But she's very dedicated, and for that, Ashley, I'm excited to give you your 20-year pin here and hope there are many, many more to come.
At least 10.
Thank you.
At least 10.
Next, Doug Overbeck would come forward to receive his 25-year pin from Kevin DePree.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Hey, good morning. Good morning. First off, us in the Sheriff's Office like to give our condolences to the Tobin family and for that loss, and also to recognize all the veterans that work for the county, that live in the county and throughout the world. We just appreciate everything they do for us and did for us. And that kind of leads us to Mr. Overbeck here. Mr. Overbeck's a veteran of the United States Coast Guard. I got to meet Overbeck and Hatterasenlet, also in the Coast Guard. He was an engineer. I was a bosom mate. So I broke a lot of things, and he fixed it. So lucky enough, I got to spend that time with him, and he still does the same thing today for me. I break a lot of things, and he still fixes it. But we got to spend a lot of time on boats together. We always laugh and joke about one time we had to go out in 30-foot seas in a little 44-foot motor lifeboat. We made it back, and we joke about that, and we're glad to be here today because of that. But Overbeck here, he's been with me a long time. He's married to Christie. He's got three kids, Alyssa, Elsie, and Riley. And he's been with the Sheriff's Office, of course, 25 years. Came in 1998. He served in numerous positions with us. Patrol, he's been a sergeant, he's been a lieutenant. And when the sheriff came in and gave me an opportunity to snatch him from Patrol Division and to criminal investigations, I did everything I could to do that. And I'm grateful for him agreeing to come over and do that. He spends a lot of hours now and doing things that a lot of people don't realize he does. He's, he gets up every morning, looks through all the calls that come in, which are a lot. We decide what needs to be issued out. He does that to all the investigators. He takes on cases himself. He does the monthly sheriff's blotter that you get to see every month. And you would think that might be easy, but it's thousands upon thousands of calls he goes through every month to put that together. He's worked on some very famous cases in Dare County, dealing with some homicides and everything else for us. And I just can't, I can't thank him enough for coming over and being part of my life ever since the Coast Guard and all the days surfing and all the time we spent together. And I don't have many more years left in me, and he's got at least five. So I'm going to enjoy every minute I get to spend with him and the rest of this career that we both hopefully will see soon. And again, we thank each and every one of you for everything you do for us, and it's just a great honor to be here to give a friend, a coworker, his 25-year pin, and we greatly appreciate you very much.
Sure. Next, Heather Gardner would come forward to get her 25-year pin from Debbie Dunn.
Good morning. Welcome. Good morning. Well, it is my pleasure again to have this opportunity to present a 25-year pin to Heather Gardner. If you know anything about Heather, she has endurance, perseverance, and a competitive nature. She is a marathon and an ultra-marathon runner and can definitely go the distance. She literally has hundreds of miles behind her. It is not uncommon for her to go out and run 100 miles at any given time, which she has done several times. She is always sought after. During our Regional Health Department Step Challenge, which Kelly and Laura talked about earlier today, they all want her on their team. I have been able to finagle that a couple times myself to benefit from Heather. That goes for her work ethic as well and her dedication to her patients. Heather is our maternal health nurse program coordinator. She manages the care for our prenatal patients from the first positive pregnancy test through delivery. We have had several accomplishments over the past several years in which Heather has played a vital role. She is responsible for our prenatal program at both Manio and NAGS Head Offices, as well as managing our maternal health patients on Hatteras Island and surrounding counties including Ocracoke. We have expanded our services to include procedures that at one time we would have to refer out. We now provide those procedures in-house for our patients, such as ultrasounds and NST testing. Heather has gone through extensive training in order for us to provide these services to our patients. Heather is our go-to for other nurses as well. She is our veteran, and she has oriented and mentored many new nursing staff. Heather takes pride in all she does. Her patients always come first and is the true definition of a patient advocate. I know that I would trust my daughters in her care. She is pleasant, kind, compassionate, and never thinks twice about going above and beyond to take care of our patients. So thank you for the past 25 years. I don't want to hear five more. I'm not going to accept that. But thank you for 25. Maybe not 25.
That brings us to our Employee of the Month, and if I had asked Spencer Gregory to come forward to make that presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to introduce you to John Morris, Parks and Recreation Leisure Activity Specialist for the Northern Beach Division. John was hired as Activity Coordinator in 2013. In 2016, he decided to make a career change and went on to be a physical education teacher in Virginia. Lucky for us, in 2021, he came back and wanted his old job back, and we were thrilled to have him back where he belongs. I'm sure many of you have seen John in action on a field or in a gym somewhere over the years. Not only is John a great employee, but he is also a great coach. He has coached Special Olympic basketball, youth basketball, Legion baseball, high school baseball, season after season, and I'm sure I'm leaving out some coaching stints. John is a natural recreation programmer. The kids love him. The adults love him. In the winter, John can be found in the gym most nights. He books the officials for all the basketball games in the Northern Beach Division, and that is quite a task. He also steps in and referees a lot of the games during the season when needed, which is pretty much nightly. In the spring, you can find John on a T-ball, baseball, or softball field, either helping facilitate a program, getting a field ready, or getting a field ready. In the summer, John is doing camps all day, every day. John is the lead on our adventure camp, where a group of Parks and Recreation employees take middle-school-aged kids to the Shandau Mountains for Virginia for a week trip. He also leads the fishing camp and many other youth camps throughout the summer. In the fall, John is on the football field, running the football program, which is a huge task with all the equipment, practices, and games each Saturday. John is easy to get along with, kind-hearted, and has a passion for the citizens of Dare, and we are lucky to have him as an employee. On his nomination form, it was stated he is wonderful, dedicated, professional, enthusiastic, creative, and an empathetic jack-of-all-trades. He jumps in with both feet for any task requested of him without hesitation or complaint. Even though John is a diehard Duke fan, we love him here at Parks and Recreation. John, congratulations on your Employee of the Month. It is well-deserved.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Before we go to public comment, if those of you that received an award this morning would go out through this door so we can get a picture. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you had public comment this morning and you've not signed up, raise your hand. I'll recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium, state your name. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light up on the podium that will come on when your time begins. There's a yellow light that will come on when you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. We have two other public hearings. One is for a zoning map text amendment, and one is for some Dare County ordinances for the S-15. If you're here to speak on either of those issues, please wait till we call those on the agenda, and we'll hear your public comment then. First on our list, we have Bebe Woody.
Welcome this morning. Hi. Thank you for allowing us to address you this morning. I'm here to speak for the community that is representing Mother Vineyard and the area that extends to Shalabag Bay as a result of Doze Creek. It has come to our attention that the property along Mother Vineyard Road and Long Road has been placed for sale, and we are a little bit concerned about the possible submission for a zoning change. Drainage ditches and creeks on the north end of Roanoke Island serve to keep these properties of residents, the Manio High School, and various other communities during rainy seasons, hurricanes, and tropical storms. The tract in question is the 4.3-acre tract of wooded land known as the Palmer Midget Property, lying on Mother Vineyard Road and Long Road. And it backs up to Rogers Road and extends beyond that to the north. We're concerned about the impacts of development of this property. We're not asking or raising any issues about there being construction or that someone buys the property and wants to place housing on that property. What we are concerned about is a request for a change in the lot size. It is presently, I believe, is R1, and the creek runs through the middle of that 4.3-acre of land. It is labeled on topographical maps and is an intermittent creek depending on heavy rain and storms. This creek was labeled on early historic topographical maps. North Carolina topographical experts informed us, when we contacted them, that the location of the creek cannot be removed from a map as it does exist. It still exists. The location of Doze Creek is accurate. We refer you to USGS.gov topographical survey maps to verify. So I guess we're asking to make sure that Doze Creek is not impacted as a result of On the properties with lower elevations, we have actually, we actually brought with us a thumb drive with pictures showing flooding of some of the properties along that roadline where Doze Creek exists. Through the years and development, some areas between the Sound and Mother Vineyard through development have probably covered up some of the Doze Creek properties. However, Doze Creek flows underneath and still exists. And we would request that before any development take place, a traffic survey for the road. We have two high schools, three, and a middle school, high school, and elementary school with traffic issues that are really difficult coming out from that road and on 64. So we would like to have a traffic study. We should have an environmental survey of Doze Creek. And Doze Creek needs to be looked at because behind the high school, it is a mess, and that creek needs to stay open to drain off to the Shalabag Bay. We would also be concerned about the number of septic tanks and elevation study and the maintenance and keeping open of Doze Creek so that flooding will not increase as it does. I have a lot more to say, of course, but I'll give these to Bobby.
Ms. Woody gave me a thumb drive earlier this morning. I've given it to Matt. I've asked him to print the pictures, and he'll give those to you later today.
Thank you.
Next, we have Juanita Westcott.
Welcome this morning. Good morning. My name is Juanita Westcott, and I live on Mother Vineyard Road. The piece of property that she just addressed is next door to me. And so this is very important, that we appreciate that you allow us to come in at the last minute and speak to this. It's a preemptive matter for us. We would like to make you aware of a parcel of property on Mother Vineyard Road that is under contract for sale. Many in our neighborhood are concerned with the possible development of the 4.3 acres that lies to the northeast of my home. Careful consideration on two points are highly important. One is the possible clearcutting of trees. We all know that trees drink or absorb water. Clearcutting of this highly wooded property would create a higher level of runoff and flooding. And may I tell you, at this point, we do not know who has bought that property. It has been under contract for about three weeks and will soon, they will have the contract finished. The second concern is the level of density of the building. As we are in a low-density area, we are concerned about the flooding of property near and on Doze Creek. Doze Creek is a natural intermittent creek that dates back in time, maybe to the first settlers on the island. At this time, its headwaters begin on Rogers Road and flow through the property that is under contract. This creek runs across Mother Vineyard, including Scubernong Road and developments that have been built off the Mother Vineyard and Scubernong Road. Doze Creek drains this entire area and runs behind Manio High School into Shalabag Bay. You're going to hear a little repetition here because we really didn't put our heads together, but this is a community problem. If this creek is blocked by debris or by the careless filling by developers, the potential for flooding in most of this area is not only probable, but is inevitable. I want to also address the pollution of the creek which feeds into Shalabag Bay. We already know that the bay is polluted. To pollute the headwaters of Doze Creek with runoff from a highly-developed land would create a more probable irreparable pollution problem. Many septic systems, houses, cement covering a big portion of this land would create a greater polluted runoff of water. A clean environment is important to the water quality and the sea and sound life that lives in our estuaries provided by our creeks and tributaries. I had a slideshow prepared. It's just pictures, but when you get it, and Mr. Alton said that he would get you a copy of that, if you will... of that, if you will note, one of the pictures is my front yard. It's my house. And being not able to show you that, if a picture is worth a thousand words, I hope you think a thousand words when you see it. It was my front yard in 2016 in Matthew. And you can say, well, lots of people get some water in that storm, and they did. I agree, but not to the degree that I had it. Two reasons this was so drastic. My property drains the property to the east, west, and north of me. Doze Creek drains the entire Mother Vineyard. It is a hill. There is an incline, and my home is the lowest elevation on Mother Vineyard. I have kept my ditch clean and unblocked for 36 years. Also, the property behind me, which makes me cleaning ditches for 50 years. I don't mind. It's okay. My ditch picks up the overflow water from Doze Creek and becomes Doze Creek at the end of my property. Doze Creek then crosses in an 18-inch pipe under the highway crossing Mother Vineyard Road. The creek continues to flow through the developed cul-de-sacs across the Mother Vineyard. Another reason for the extreme flooding in our area is that the creek is blocked in places. There are fallen trees and blockages as it flows from Scupernong Road and behind Manio High School. So as not to create a worse flood problem for all our neighborhoods, we would like to ask the county to allocate some funds for the cleanup of Doze Creek. Don't wait for another rainy season or tropical storm when your constituents ask for help with their drainage problems. My ditch is somewhat sufficient for the area's drainage. I say somewhat. My ditch overflows in heavy rains as well as tropicals, but will not be sufficient for higher water runoff from overdeveloped land. I thank you for your time and allowing us to speak at the last minute. I hope you will look at our pictures. You probably won't know all you're looking at, but it is pictures of the ditches that flow all the way from Rogers Road down through Scupernong. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Westcott. Next is Don Midget.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Welcome this morning.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Don Midget. I live at 140 Mother Vineyard Road, Manio. I purchased my property in 2017. I found out that my home had a flood claim for $25,000 on it in 2016. Same time Juanita had a flood. I received a flood also, or my home received a flood. I put a French drain underneath the home when I found out about it, and two sump pumps, and a dehumidifier. I have encapsulated in my home underneath the crawl space. When I get a runoff from Mother Vineyard Road, the sand underneath the plastic gets wet, and the pumps go on, and they sing, fully pumping out. When I saw what was happening on my home, Juanita has the same problem, so we dug a French drain underneath her home and put pumps underneath her home. Both homes are across the street from each other and are at the lowest point on Mother Vineyard Road. We know that, and there's nothing we can do about it. I became very concerned about Doze Creek when Palmer Midget property across the street from me went up for sale, and another piece of property adjoining it facing Rogers Road was sold approximately two years ago. The acreages of property, seven acres together. Now, if you remove the trees from that properties, all the water on that acreage, plus the water coming down from Mother Vineyard Road on a common, would give you common sense and would tell you, we may flood. These properties are unique in having Doze Creek meandering through them. The creek goes back before the historical Roanoke Island map of 1943. I checked today. Doze Creek has water in it at Webcourt, Scupernong, and Mud in the creek at Rogers Road. The reeds on Rogers Road indicate where the water is. I have been in touch with the Army Corps of Engineers, and they told me that they were familiar with the area and to contact the USGS hydrologist topo maps. They gave me the number, and I called and spoke to Dominic Antolino. And I asked him if Doze Creek could be removed from any of the maps, and his answer was no. Even though there was no water on the top, the water underneath was dry due to the dry spell we have. And it meanders through a natural creek when it rains. This is a unique creek. I am told that there were flat-bottomed boats on it. Excuse my, I got bronchitis coming on yesterday. If any of the property is developed, they should think about some type of catch basin or due to the flow of water coming down Doze Creek into Shalabag Bay with the septic system, adding more contamination. These properties are in a flood zone along with myself and anyone else living on Doze Try to find a way, if you can, try to find a way, to remove some of these branches and trees and stuff like that. They're all up and down the creek. They're holding the water back. I appreciate it, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Fred Brum, it looks like Brumbach.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Good morning, gentlemen and ladies of the council here. I don't have a prepared speech as my neighbors have, and I think they've told you everything, and you don't need to hear it over and over. I just wanted to show my support for what's happening here. I live at 129 Mother Vineyard. My property floods from rain pretty regularly, although it hasn't in the last year or so. We're in a drought. When the property floods, that water has to go through Juanita's yard and into Doze Creek. And I never really thought about Doze Creek. I'd heard about it, but in the sale of this land, we discovered that the creek actually runs through the middle of the land. And in our soil, I'm a gardener. I'm digging all the time. We go down about two feet of topsoil, at which point we hit clay, a very dense gray clay. That water does not perk through that clay very well, so it has to flow. It flows underground, and when it's a lot of water, we see it on top of the ground. I have watched Juanita's ditch, full of water, run for weeks to two weeks after a heavy rain, and it flows across and on down. But in 2016, when we had Matthew, Juanita had 30 inches of water in her. I was completely surrounded by water at my home, and it took quite a while for that water to drain. Once the wind changed and started blowing south, Doze Creek was allowed to blow out. But Doze Creek is clogged most of the time. Now, I know at one point, somebody, and we're not sure who did it, a couple of young guys were going up and cleaning Doze Creek, and that has helped. But Doze Creek is a mess, and when you look at these photos, you'll see the debris, trees, leaves, everything, clogging Doze Creek. So we're just asking that you do something and recognize that Doze Creek is an important natural flow of water from all of the areas around Mother Vineyard out to Shalabag Bay. And of course, the other thing is, we would like to keep the R1 rating of 20,000 square feet per home, minimum. Most of the homes on Mother Vineyard are an acre to two acres, and we're very proud of that, and we pride to have a very nice neighborhood. It's not that we don't want to see other housing, but we just don't want tons of houses in a small space with runoff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have on my list. Would anyone else like to speak at public comment this morning? Seeing no one here, is there anyone in Buxton that would like to speak?
No comment from Buxton.
Mr. Chairman, we would close the public comment and move to item five on the agenda. That's a public hearing for a zoning map and text amendment for the Martins Point Commercial District. Noah Gilf is here to present that, or was here to present that.
He just stepped out.
Is he coming back?
He is coming back.
We'll move on to six, and then we'll come back to...
All right. Number six is a public hearing on the Dare County ordinances, the S-15. As you know, we do this from time to time. As you all adopt ordinances through the year, periodically, we bring in and codify all those into our ordinance books. And so what you're doing today is you're reapproving things you've already approved, and you're also adopting a resolution that allows us to get those into the ordinances books. Nothing changes, no new ordinances in this. We're just cleaning up and making sure we've properly approved and codified all the old ordinances that you've already done.
You go read that resolution?
I'll read it if you'd like for me to.
Yes, sir, please.
This is, "Whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati has completed the S-15 supplement to the Dare County Code of Ordinances, which supplement contains all ordinances of a general and permanent nature enacted since the prior supplement to the Dare County Code of Ordinances. And whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation has recommended a revision or addition of certain sections of the Code of Ordinances, which are based on or make reference to the North Carolina general statutes. And where it is the intent of the Dare County Board of Commissioners to accept these updated sections in accordance with the changes in the law of North Carolina. And whereas it is necessary to provide for the usual daily operation of Dare County and for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, the safety, and general welfare of Dare County, that this ordinance take effect at an early date. Therefore, be it resolved by the Dare County Board of Commissioners that the 2023 S-15 supplement to the Dare County Code of Ordinances, as submitted by American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati, Ohio, and attached here to, is adopted by references have set out in its entirety. Such supplements shall be deemed published as of the date of its adoption and approved by the Dare County Board of Commissioners, and such supplements shall be inserted into the Code of Ordinances kept on file in the Office of the Clerk. This is sixth day of November 2023."
Pleasure of the board. A motion on the floor by Commissioner House to adopt the resolution enacting and adopting supplements to Dare County Code of Ordinances. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, we'll be back to item five, and that's the zoning and map text amendment for the Martins Point Commercial District. And I'd ask Noah to make that presentation, and then we will have the public hearing.
Good morning, Noah.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. On October 3rd of 2023...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Let's go back. You all adopted, but we're required to have a public hearing on the previous one. So let's do that public hearing.
Yeah, let's do that.
All right.
Sorry, Noah.
Sorry, Noah. Sit tight.
Just hang tight.
Is anyone here to speak with regard to the Dare County supplement, S-15? Anyone in Buxton here to speak on that issue?
No comment from Buxton.
Hearing none, then that public hearing will be closed. Mr. Chairman, if you entertain a new motion after the public hearing to approve that resolution...
Absolutely. I'll now entertain a new motion for that resolution. Once again, vice Commissioner Couch, House, excuse me, and seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of that motion then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Now, we're back to five. Noah, thank you for your patience.
Yes, sir. So for the last several months, been in communication with the town of Southern Shores, and they agreed to relinquish their extratorial jurisdiction of 10 Martins Point properties that are the 10 commercial properties when you come into Martins Point off of Highway 158. They adopted on October 3rd a resolution relinquishing that property.
Why?
It was at a request from several people out of the Martins Point commercial properties.
Why? I'm trying to figure out why.
They're zoned by the town of Southern Shores. That's extraterritorial jurisdiction. They would rather be in the Dare County zoning than in the Southern Shores.
Why? Do we know why? Nobody knows?
John is our planning board chairman. He's also...
Thanks, John. If you would, please. I remain ignorant of some of the background. I'm just trying to understand. That's all.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm John Finelli. I'm a resident of Martins Point. In addition to being a member of your planning board, I'm the ETJ representative. So I have represented the...
Extraterritorial jurisdictions, right. Got it.
On the Southern Shores Planning Board. Town of Southern Shores was incorporated in 1979. Shortly thereafter, they established ETJ over Martins Point, which at that time was unzoned under single ownership. They relinquished the Martins Point residential properties from the ETJ in 2001. I think they should have relinquished the commercial properties at the same time, but they chose not to. And it's the desire of the property owners there to be in Dare County, under Dare County zoning. They are part of Dare County, always have been, but it's their desire to be under the Dare County planning and zoning rather than Southern Shores.
Why?
I can...
Do we have a why, or is it unknown?
Having served on the county planning board for 20-plus years, and having served on the Southern Shores Planning Board for 14 years, you want to be under Dare County.
Once again, it remains unspoken because it would be inappropriate to speak it out loud. Thank you, John. That's fair enough. Keep going.
Well, I'll just add a little bit to that. It gives, by having their own zoning district, it gives them a little more control over what goes on there. Right now, they're grouped in with the Southern Shores Commercial, and things are a little bit different. Martins Point Commercial properties are, except for the Central Garden Nursery, they're offices and they're service-oriented, whereas Southern Shores is more commercial retail space and so on. So it's good to have them in their own district and a little more control from their point of view.
John, let me ask you this. Does having anything to do with the development of the property for marinas slash condos? Has nothing to do with that?
This process started before that submittal to Southern Shores for the development occurred on that property. This process started before that had been submitted.
So we would not have any ruling on that?
No, that's still in the town of Southern Shores.
Okay. Yeah. Just trying to read through the...
Sure. Again, it's a, the Martins Point Commercial area is a little bit different, and this gives them more control over the planning and zoning.
I get it.
Yeah, and this zoning and property that you're looking at is from Gingite Creek west towards the Sound?
Yeah, it does not include that one Soundfront property, which is the DOT property. That's now in the town of Kitty Hawk. It does include just those 10 commercial properties there.
Got you. Thank you.
I'm available if you have any other questions.
No, thank you, John. I didn't, I'm sorry I put you on the spot. I wasn't trying to...
No, not at all. Thank you.
Yeah, if we've got any more questions, let's let Noah get through his presentation, then we can ask questions after that, if you don't mind.
All right.
Noah?
Yes, sir. So in September, the planning board, Dare County Planning Board, started working to review the regulations that would be needed to have these 10 commercial properties under the Dare County zoning ordinance. And in doing so, we took a look at the Southern Shores ordinance for what these properties were afforded, and decided that that ordinance still suited these properties. All the uses there would still be afforded to them, but we were able to go in and amend that ordinance to reflect our ordinance for other similar commercial properties, and were able to tweak that language so it was reflective of what we already have in commercial In doing so, when a town relinquishes their ETJ over a property, the county is allowed to go ahead and start to, you know... the county is allowed to go ahead and start reviewing development regulations prior to, yeah, Southern Shores relinquishing it, so that's what we did. And in doing so, we had to adopt the draft zoning ordinance and the zoning map that would place these 10 properties under Dare County's regulation for development and zoning. In the packet, there's a draft ordinance for y'all's review.
Are we to hold a public hearing first, correct?
Unless y'all have other questions?
Unless y'all have, unless anybody has any additional questions? Does anybody have any additional questions?
I just want to ask Noah one thing. No, based on what you just said, the number of uses have expanded slightly.
No, sir, the uses that are already in the Southern Shores ordinance have all been reflected in this, just some of our lot size height requirements setbacks. We amended those to reflect what is in our other commercial zoning districts.
Got you, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Bumby?
With that, we would open the public hearing. Does anyone here like to speak to that issue? Seeing no hands, is there anyone in Buxton who would like to speak to that issue?
No comment from Buxton.
That we would close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman, it's the board.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board with respects to this request?
I move that the Martins Point Commercial Zoning Map and Martins Point Commercial Zoning District Regulations be adopted as recommended by the planning board. The finding of consistency and reasonableness is adopted as part of this motion.
All right, thank you, Vice Chairman, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor of this signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Noah.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Chairman, item seven on the agenda is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financing Reporting, and I'll turn that back over to you.
Absolutely, thank you, County Manager. Well, it's, once again, I'd like to formally recognize Dare County Finance Director David Clausen and his Assistant Finance Director Sally DeFosse. For 32 consecutive years of receiving the prestigious Certificate of Achievement and Excellence in Financial Reporting. This award is the highest form of recognition there is in government accounting, and we've done it for some 32 years. And this is once again awarded for fiscal year June 30, 2022. This certification was started back in 1945 to encourage state and local governments to go above and beyond the minimum requirements of accounting principles by preparing an annual comprehensive report that's full transparency to the members of our community. The goal of the program is to, not to assess the financial health of our state and local government, but instead to ensure that members of the community are able to do so themselves using all of the financial information that's been translated into a single comprehensive document that's easy for our citizens to read. Producing this report meets all the requirements by the state, and we have done that, once again, for some 32 years. And ever since our Finance Director, Dave Clausen, came on board, we've received this award. We've also received the Certification of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting, once again, for some 32 years. Dave's exceptional leadership in his department, we couldn't be more deserving of this award under his leadership. Another key member, as I mentioned, is Sally DeFosse, our assistant. She's truly done an excellent job and effort. Lot of hard work and dedication goes into this. And, you know, along with all of their team members in the Finance Department, they do an incredible job. If anybody's interested in viewing the award-winning report and learning more about Dare County's exceptional financial health, I encourage you to go to darencgov.finance, where you can certainly download the documents and see why we have won this award some 32 years. I'm going to come down front and make some presentations to both of them, but as you all know, the health of our community and financial health of our community is one of the most important things that this board has to look at and take a look at on a consistent basis to strive to make this happen year after year. And then on behalf of our board, Dave, I want to congratulate you and Sally and your staff for making this achievement year after year after year. So if you'll join me down front, I will make this presentation to the two of you. Yeah, I've made this presentation on behalf of the board numerous times. This thing does not get any lighter today. It's incredible. It's so new, we're starting a whole new line of years on this plaque. We had, they had to do another plaque. So we got several of these hanging on the wall, and now we're starting a new one. But this is your achievement for excellence in financial reporting. So this is yours. Hang tight, it's got some weight to it. Sally? Yours is a little bit more bearable to handle here, but this is the award for financial reporting and achievement for yourself. Once again, thank you, your staff, and all of y'all for the job that you do. It's incredible. We're fortunate to have you guys. Come on in here, and we'll get a picture.
Once again, Dave, Sally, no small accomplishment, guys. Thank you sincerely, that's outstanding, outstanding work, really.
County Manager?
Yes, sir. Next, we're on item eight on the agenda. Tim Cafferty and Lee Nettles are here. They're here for the Dare County Tourism Board Request for Consent for Expenditure From the Restricted Fund Line, number 4999.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. I'm joined today by Tim Cafferty, the Chair of the Dare County Tourism Board, and by Jeffrey Schwarzenberg. The Tourism Board created a new position of Community Engagement Manager following receipt of the Long Range Tourism Management Plan Report and its recommendations. Jeff's primary responsibility is to bring that plan to life over time. Many of you know Jeff already. He's been an active member in the community, but we wanted to take the opportunity to introduce him here in his new capacity. One element of the long-range plan involves making investments in the community through the Tourism Board's grant programs. Today, we come before you to request your consent on expenditures from the Tourism Board's TIC program, the Tourism Impact Grant Program. The board has reviewed the 15 applications and unanimously recommends awards totaling $1,584,389. The projects span Dare County, projects on Roanoke Island, on the northern beaches, and on Hatteras Island as well. The projects generally group into three main types. Sidewalk and multi-use path projects. Perhaps the most noticeable one, or the most notable one this round, being a 10-foot-wide multi-use path on the west side of the bypass connecting existing sidewalks in Kitty Hawk all the way down to the KDH line. The second type of project that we saw quite a few applications group under involves enhancements to tourism attractions. Everything from restoration of the 1874 building at Chickama Kamiko in preparation for the 150th anniversary of life-saving stations on the coast of North Carolina, to two oyster exhibits at the North Carolina Aquarium, Roanoke Island, to improvements to support Festival Park's main stage loading dock for the successful events that they've been having out there. The third grouping of projects focuses on improving accessibility. These include an all-abilities playground in Kitty Hawk, Cape Hatteras Bathhouse, pathways at Elizabethan Gardens, and a beach crossover in Nagseth. We're especially proud of those projects in just improving the accessibility for all visitors and residents here in Dare County. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions about any of the specific projects, but otherwise would respectfully request your consent on the Tourism Impact Grants totaling $1,584,389.
Any questions, Lee, and his chair?
Just for Dave, Dave, you confirmed the current fund is 9.5 million and 25% of which was restricted?
It's all restricted for that purpose, for those purposes.
Then what's 25% you gave me?
No, no, that's the grand total of the restricted amount.
Okay, no questions.
The Tourism Board, the legislated direction is, well, legislative mandate is that the dollars that we receive would be 75% for general fund, 25% for the restricted fund. Within that, the Tourism Board has set its own funding policies for 70% of the restricted fund going into long-term restricted and 30% into short-term restricted. So the dollars that are shown within these grants represent the entirety of the Tourism Impact Grant Line Item this year. We, the board believes that it's more important for those dollars to go back out into the community than rolling over and being in an account. So we'll look to budget for this line item once again with the upcoming fiscal year and get the process started once again.
Okay, anyone else have any questions?
Much to approve the expenditures.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the expenditures.
I second.
And it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Lee, you know, I always ask you this, and I think it's extremely important that we hype on it every single time. This 1.5 brings to a total of over how many millions of dollars over?
We're over 22 million, I think, at this point. And a while back, we looked at the number of grants that have been awarded through the restricted fund, but also the event grants, and we're over 700 different projects that have been funded to more than 70 different applicants recipients, so.
I harp on that every time, as you very well know, because I think it's critical that the public be aware of what the visitors are doing with this money and how much money is going back into all of our municipalities and not unincorporated there. And this is huge. That's a ton of money, and can't thank you enough.
Thank you, and thanks also for those views that we're able to attend the tourism summit. We appreciate it.
Very good, thank you. Rob?
Kind of an off-topic question a little bit, Lee, Tim. Have you guys gotten requests or considered, and I'm going back to a topic we've been visiting for a while, the construction of sports courts, be it tennis, or basketball, or pickleball? Would those fall under the umbrella of tourism-related investments? Because as I read down the list, you know, we've got pathways, we've got all these things that are certainly infrastructure that make a tourist visitor's experience much, much better. And I don't know, have we ever considered doing that?
We, I'm sure that the Tourism Board would be open to that. We've, I'm trying to think back over the previous awards. We have had some involvement with sports amenities and that type of thing. The threshold for the grants, at least, are for programs or services needed due to the impact of tourism. I think that that's pretty easy to satisfy that requirement.
I was reminded of it. I was driving up to Corolla this past weekend, and driving up and back, I saw tennis courts off to the side that were kind of fenced in, restricted for, you know, Dove Creek Development or Sand Dunes Estates or whatever, that aren't really available for folks on an open basis. And I thought, hmm, we've had so many requests for pickleball and others. And as I went down the list before coming to the meeting, I thought, I wonder if those courts, if we could do such a thing, you know? That's why I was asking you how much you've got, because I didn't want you to be out of money if we could find something that made sense.
And of course, that was a big part of the intention with the uses that were planned for the event center, being able to satisfy sporting events and recreational opportunities. But we would certainly entertain those projects. It's, to be eligible for the restricted fund dollars or for the grants in general, you have to either be a Dare County governmental entity or a Dare County nonprofit, so.
We're a Dare County governmental entity right here.
You got that one covered.
All right, we checked the box, thanks, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, guys. Thank you, Ash. Chairman, that would bring us to item nine on the agenda. This is a request to amend Section 91.056, the Redemption Adoption Ordinance. And Bill Coleman from the SPCA is here for that presentation.
You're up, Bill.
Good morning.
Good morning, Bill.
Thank you all, I just wanted to say, before they get out the door, a lot of our tourists have four legs. Just saying.
They do.
Okay. Well, we had just, we're probably the only county that I'm aware of that has an eight-day holding period for animals that come in as strays. And it's really prohibitive for us in a lot of ways. We, the state itself has 72 hours, three days. Every other shelter I've ever talked to is at that same amount. So we wanted to make revisions that would say there was a minimum of 72 hours so that we can still hold an animal over longer if we need to. If an animal has a chip and we haven't located them or whatever, we'll do what it takes. We want to send the animals home. But ultimately, we can get them up for adoption that much sooner. We have animals that will just sit in the back, mostly dogs, that'll sit in the back for eight days. And it's time-consuming for my staff. It's, again, it keeps them in the shelter where we don't need them to be. So that's what these changes are. And I'll take any questions.
Rob, you have any comments?
No, Bill and I have been through this ahead of time, so yeah, everything is good.
Anyone else? Okay, then, I'll ask the pleasure of the board with this, respects to this change.
Motion to schedule public hearing on December 4, 2023, at 9:00 a.m.
Second.
Okay, so a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman, it's been seconded by the vice chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Chairman, item 10, Mr. Alba was able to be here today, so we'll skip that one and we'll move it to our next agenda. That brings us to item 11. That's a request to close a portion of the GA Kohler right-of-way, and Noah was here for that presentation.
There's been a request by Mr. Eric Davis. He owns property at GA Kohler Court. And as of this morning, I've received four other affidavits from the other property owners there that are agreeing to the closure. GA Kohler Court is a road that runs north to south in Rodanthe and as much of the other properties in Rodanthe, it's facing, you know, the rapid erosion rates and impacts from, you know, storms. And doing so, they're losing property, their settlements keep getting damaged. So they're requesting that the 60-foot right-of-way that was originally platted when the subdivision was developed be reduced. The initial proposal that was submitted to me by Mr. Davis was requesting a reduction to 40 feet. The subdivision standards require a 45-foot minimum right-of-way for platted subdivisions. But before you do, Dave, as part of 153A, 241, the general statute that regulates the ability for accounting to close a road or a portion of a road, y'all must adopt a resolution to- a road or a portion of a road, y'all must adopt a resolution to schedule a hearing. The earliest date for that hearing would be December fourth.
Okay.
I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. To schedule a public hearing?
On December fourth.
Okay.
Just as a point of reference, if you were coming off the Rodenthee Bridge, if it wasn't for the cul-de-sac, you'd run straight, straight Oceanside into this area here. And I think it's consistent with what multiple agencies have been trying to do relative to the problems there in Rodenthee with ocean encroachment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by the vice chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that brings us to item twelve. This is an amendment to the dredge contract. A meeting ago, or two meetings ago, you all amended the dredge contract to get the charges that we charged, or that they charge us, in line with the changes that are made at the core. The core rate is the base rate. You made those changes. After that was done, it came to everybody's attention that when we're calculating the savings, they have to show a savings over the twenty-five-year term in order to get their loan forgiven that was given to them by the state. Where do we calculate that, too? And so what they've asked is that we, for the sole purpose of calculating the dredge savings, that we make that effective, that change effective back to October first of two thousand twenty-two. What that means is they, even though they can't charge us until, based on core changes, until the amendment date that you all just did a few weeks ago, they can go back and calculate the savings because the core rates changed during that time, and their savings would be based off of that change. And so if the core went up, then they're going to get greater savings because they were charging us at a lower rate, and they should get credit for that.
Sounds fair.
Yeah, so that's fair, and so that's what this change is for.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Commissioner House, seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, items thirteen and fourteen are part of the same thing. Item thirteen is a capital project ordinance amendment. For the EMS station there in Kill Devil Hills, when it was designed, it was engineered, and the way the affluent was going to go to the treatment facility was all designed for that. And it was bid based on those original designs. As that project went through, and in working with the owner of the sewage plant, they used a different kind of grinder and a different-sized pipe and all that sort of thing. And they wanted us to change it to their sizes and their standards and the way that they do it, even though what we had already designed met all the state's standards. Their reasoning for that was, is they're required to keep and maintain it. Once we put this in, it becomes theirs. And they've got the parts, they've got the expertise to do it based on the equipment that they use. And if we use what we want to use, it's out of their standard, it's out of their inventory and all that. We talked with them to try to avoid having to pay that extra cost. We worked out an arrangement with them where they were willing to allow us to do it the way we had originally designed it, but we had to keep and maintain it instead of them. When Dave went out and pulled the cost over time for us to keep and maintain it, it exceeded the eighty thousand cost to put it in. So it's more cost-effective for us to put it in to their standard and then turn the whole maintenance side of it over to them than it is for us to keep it in-house and us do the maintenance over time. And so item one is, or item thirteen, is a change to the capital project ordinance to amend that, to include that eighty thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. And then when we get to item fourteen, that's the approval of the change order on the contract to do the same thing.
We'll take them one at a time. The change order is?
The capital project ordinance amendment first.
Right.
Move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then next would be the capital project ordinance amendment. I'm sorry, the EMS change order.
Right, right.
Move to approve.
Okay, once again, motion on the floor by the vice chair, seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is your consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of the minutes, the tax collectors' report, scheduling of meeting dates for two thousand twenty-four, the Brightspeed contract for Internet and network services, late applications for property tax exemptions, service agreement with Maximus for U.S. Services, Inc., a resolution for the conveyance of surplus property, a budget amendment for the dredge loan forgiveness, a budget amendment for the state and local cybersecurity grant, opioid settlement funds resolution, DHHS Public Health, Charles W. Gaddy and Lucy Fence Gaddy Endowment Fund, Community Foundation, and the Doc Rider Plus user agreements.
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice chairman. Any further discussion?
Would Skyler print the page with the dates, so I can carry one in the file?
Yeah.
You know, the meeting dates?
And?
That's all. Thank you.
And we've also corrected that. Those meetings start at nine o'clock. There was one that showed five o'clock, so.
She may have already corrected.
And I think she's corrected it.
Yep, yep, got it.
Just want to point that out. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then for your board appointments, you've got the Dare County Waterways Commission. The commission recommends Sean Darcy be appointed to fill the vacancy.
I've got a question. It says on the agenda, as commission for working waterman?
Waterways commission is different.
But it says on the waterways.
Yeah, two different things now that you mention it.
It's the Waterways Commission, right?
Yeah, it's supposed to be the Waterways Commission.
It's supposed to be the working waterman?
Working waterman.
Okay, then it's wrong on my sheet. It should be the working waterman. Yeah.
Working waterman, okay.
Yeah, working waterman's commission. I would like to make the motion to appoint Sean Darcy to fill the scientific seat on that commission.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice chairman. Those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then your upcoming board and committee appointments, you've got, in December, you've got the Equalization Review Board with five terms expiring, the Parks and Rec Advisory Council with one term expiring, the Special Motor Vehicle Evaluation Review Committee with three terms expiring, the Tourism Board with seven terms expiring, and the Transportation Advisory Board with one term expiring. In January, you have the Nursing Home Community Advisory Council with one term expiring. And in February, you have one term expiring on the planning board. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to item seventeen, and that's commissioner's business and manager's business. Do you have anything there, Bobby?
Yes, sir, I have a couple of things.
Okay.
One is just sort of a heads-up, so there's no sticker shock as we get to the first of the year. Rob's already giving me the sticker shock.
I didn't do a thing. I didn't say a word, Mr. Chairman. I never moved.
Mark, your words carefully.
We have thought that costs were leveling out, and what we're finding is they're still rising.
There we go.
And so as we get to the first of the year and start bidding these projects for Phase Two, we're likely to see some changes from what we had anticipated those costs be. And we'll have to go back and revisit the CIP and revisit those contracts and those projects to reflect whatever those changes have become. And so I'm telling you now, so that I don't spring it on you at some meeting and you hadn't had time to digest some of that. Part of that's going to also make us look at Phase Three, and depending on what we find when we bid these, does that then change the timing or the planning or whatever in Phase Three? The good news is, our revenues have still been good, so some of our numbers are a little better, but I don't know how much significance that is. But anyway, just be aware that that's coming, and we'll look at it probably at the first of the year when those bids comes up. Dave?
I just add, Barn Hill thinks that's the case, the architects do not. So we're going to see what the biz do.
All right. The second thing is, I will need some approval there. Over at First Flight, where we put in the lights to try to create those fields, we had an old, we knew that there was an old irrigation system there, and we knew that it needed to be repaired. And we had our guys go out there to try to repair it. But that irrigation system is so old and in such a mess, it needs to be replaced. We've looked at two or three ways to do that. One is to just replace it like you would normally do. But if you go back there on the school fields, if you've seen all those, they're fences and they're dugouts, and they're brown, or that brown water out of the wells creates a problem. We didn't want to do that out there and mess up all the work and make it look bad. And so I've worked with the, our order director, and we can hook it into our distribution lines. We've got to run a kind of circuitous route to do it, but we can do it. And the cost to do that is about seventy-two thousand dollars to run that line and get that irrigation system where we can use it. Again, that can change because we've got to do some borings under some roads and stuff to get to the distribution line, and depending on what we find and how that is. And so if I come back to you sometime and say, hey, it wasn't seventy-two, it was, that's why, because we don't have a?
Fifty-two?
I hope. We don't have a direct route to get it, and there's no distribution line nearby to make that happen. And so I want to bring that to your attention. Theoretically, I could take it out of the contingency and just do it, but I wanted to let you know what we were doing, make sure that was something that you all were comfortable with. There are going to be some additional costs over time in that field. That field, I went out and looked at it, I think the chairman did, too.
Well, that's what brought it to light. It was brought to my attention. And I discussed it with Bobby. I went out to see the fields.
Well, and?
And we got eight hundred thousand dollars invested in lights on a field that you can't play on.
Well, what?
Yeah.
Well, that's, I think that's stronger than?
That's part of it. And so I had a conversation with Bobby, and we're going to try to fill the holes out there because it's, and the turf is.
So that area?
He ain't gonna let me talk. Go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead. That area out there has been played on for years, so it's not that it's not playable.
It's not playable. I went out there.
I did, too.
It's not playable.
Okay. And they're playing on it now.
No, they're not. The season's over with, Bobby.
But I'm telling you, the Storm and other groups play on that field, and have been playing on that field for years. I'm not telling you that it doesn't need work. You're right about that. I've asked Spencer to go out there and look at it, get someone out there to see what it would take to bring topsoil out there and fill it, so that it's got some holes like this here and there, but it's wavy. It's not?
Needs landscape.
It needs to be graded or smooth.
And turf.
And you can't, you can't just grade it because it's sand, and your grass won't grow back. So you're going to have to put some kind of topsoil over it and then plant some kind of grass on it to hold the topsoil down. So that's all coming, and it's going to be done. And it's just another, the next phase of the expense as we go forward to get it in better playing condition. So just make you aware that's coming as well.
So we need to update the irrigation system so that when we do plant grass?
Thank you.
Right, right, exactly. And we're not in the growing season, so now's a good time to do that. So, okay, so that's, I'm going to do that out of contingency, just do it. And, but I wanted you all to be aware of what we're going on. If you get calls, let people know, you know, that's what's happening out there. The last thing I have is, we've had a request to change or to name an area called Graves Creek. And Graves Creek is on Hatteras Island. It's in Buxton, and it flows sort of around and back out into the Sound. The United States Board on Geographic Names has sent us the information that they need our approvals. I think it's been requested by the Gray family down there. And if you all are willing, then we need to give our blessing to go forward. I had sent this thing out and asked, does anybody have any objections? And I haven't heard any responses back. I think Commissioner Couch may be more familiar with this than I am, if you want to add anything to that. But if you're willing, then we need to go forward and give our blessing to that.
It's historically accurate. It's a good thing.
Yeah, I was getting ready to ask. I think it's always been kind of known as Graves Creek anyway, so, yeah.
No, just a?
Need a motion, wait, move to approve.
Spelled with an egg.
There's a motion on the floor to approve by the vice chairman. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And that'd be all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Bateman, would you kick it off today?
Yeah, I will. So in reference to the folks from the North Inmanio about the Doe Creek and so forth, Bobby, we did some projects, and I think they were just completed last year in Kitty Hawk. The town did it there. They had a hook-and-sack project. Isn't that something we can maybe apply for for those folks?
We already have. In fact, during the meeting, I got an email from a granting thing. I had talked with Noah about that, asked about Doe's Creek. He'd already sent it over to Charlie at Soil and Water to try to get them involved to see if there's something we could do there. So we're already on that as we speak.
Cool. Okay, good. The other, I got an email, I think Bob and the rest of the board also did. Alan Poole, who I serve on the Recreation Advisory Board with, submitted the legislators appropriated fifty-four point nine million dollars for multi-use paths throughout the state of North Carolina. I addressed and talked to Vice Chairman Overman about a multi-use path, and you helped clean this side of the road on Driftwood, which goes from intersection by Elizabethan Inn to the middle school back entrance. I was wondering if we could maybe try to tap into some of those funds to do a multi-use path there. Also, maybe look at maybe Airport Road. The other place we could possibly look at is maybe down the Hatters, some of her stuff for some of that money. Long process to get that funds, I'm sure, but at least we could maybe start the process.
I sent that over to Spencer to have him take a look at those. I'll add these two projects. We were looking, the path we have here now that goes out throughout to CSI needs some work. It's on a capital plan for, I don't know when, a year or two out, but it needs some, five years out. So it's a ways out. It needs some work now, and so I asked him to take a look at that, to see if we could get some funding to get that back up to speed and get it like we want it. I'll get him to add the Driftwood to the middle school and also take a look at the Airport Road.
Okay. And the other thing, we were talking about the Terrace Bureau. Last year, we approached the, I think, the Storm, and there was also another league, which is a nonprofit, for them to go to the Terrace Bureau, and whether those soccer moms did that or not, to apply for funds for their soccer fields. Isn't that something we could do and tap into that funds that they have?
We indicated that it might be something that we could do. The issue becomes, what are we using the field for? If we're using it for our Parks and Rec program, then it's not eligible, because that, if that's our use, we've got to get a tourism nexus in there. If we're using it as a sports complex to draw out of town tourists and tournaments and, you know, in the shoulder seasons and all that sort of thing, then it probably would be. If you're using a combination of the two, then I don't, I don't know what the breakdown has to be to make sure you don't run afoul of the limitations they have on using their money for tourism-only purposes. So that's the issue. So, for example, that, as we do it right now, that field at First Flight wouldn't be eligible for those funds because we don't have any tourism nexus for that. That's used for our Parks and Rec programs. It's used for our high school programs.
Well, doesn't the Storm use that field, too?
The Storm does use that field.
And they have tournaments, and their tournaments are primarily?
So the question becomes, if we use it, I'm making this up, ninety percent of the time for non-tourism, can we sink money in it for the ten percent that?
Okay.
I don't know the answer to that. That would be something that I'd have to ask Lee about.
Just trying to, the issue with the fields, and we talked about this before, but at the Terrace Bureau, because of Diane's association with the Storm and the other folks there, it has been an issue. And of anything that I have received, other than? it has been an issue and of anything that I have received, other than pickleball, calls from, it's about soccer. You know, that, that's a growing sport and we have so many kids that are doing that thing. I think what you're trying to do and with Spencer and Bob's efforts, try to bring his fields up to par is warranted, but it's not going to get any better until we bite the bullet and spend some money.
That's right.
And we got to do it.
And the question, so doing seventy-two thousand dollars out of the contingency we could do, but going out there and spending several hundred thousand dollars to sod a field, we need to plan and put that in a budget somewhere. I don't have contingency to do that. So that's something that we've got to figure out going forward.
Right. Ms. Chairman Zelliger.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Couch?
Yes, sir. They say sometimes when the loss of people in the community comes in threes, that's exactly what we've had in Hatteras. I know this is on more of a social thing. It is Commissioner's business, so I'll indulge myself on this. So we've lost three people in the past week here. One you may recognize is Hilton Rollinson, who was a longtime fixture, traffic control at the ferry docks. They called him the Candy Man. He was always carrying candy. He would give it to people upset in line about waiting and would hand them a breath mint or something. A little, a lot of, no pun intended in there. And of course, kids and stuff. And he was just such a super guy. I remember being maybe four years old and the old Tower Circle Motel had these iron grates and I used to like to climb up on them and I got turned around there, was hanging eight feet up in the air, age four, with the back of my belt buckle. And it was Hilton who reached up there and got me off of there. I don't know where my mom and dad were, but it was, thank you Hilton for that. Secondly, Sarah Austin, she's actually a Tillet. She was Captain Ome's sister. And Bull, Captain Bull Tolson, who we all know from the Sea Toy, she died a week ago and thirty minutes before her service started, there was hardly any room there. I got there knowing it would be crowded. Her service was on Saturday and it was so packed in there, I stood up there by the preacher and she had a lot. There were people from all over Dare County for, there for that. You know, she was quite a remarkable, she had that, had that Tillet military bearing. A lot of the Tilitts, you know, they, they call it the way they see it. She'd been really good in the military. We'd all been stepping to if that was the case. I admired her confidence greatly and, but that's quite a legacy there when you look at that side of the Tillet family there with Captain Ome and now with, with Bull. And, you know, having grown up with him, he went to school down there, graduated, I believe, yeah, he graduated with us nineteen seventy-eight. It's quite a few years back. But to see Bull dancing with her, shagging and stuff was just a real, real joy. I mean, people see that side of that family and don't realize how tight they were. I actually live two doors away from her other daughter, so big loss there. And then thirdly, Captain Johnny Williams Senior died Saturday night. He was in his nineties. He was quite a local legend there. His big, big family, children, grandchildren. And some of you may know him from the book by Ben Dixon McNeil, The Hattersmen, which was, won the Mayflower Award in nineteen fifty-eight. And there was a section, not a section, but there's a couple of paragraphs in there about Johnny. His ability to handle an automobile was remarkable and that, his rundown through his children and grandchildren. Trust me, I grew up out on the beach with, driving with those, with those guys as well. But Ben Dixon McNeil made the comment, when Johnny was in the Coast Guard, came by to bring him some material. McNeil was a government employee, but McNeil, knowing of Johnny's prowess behind the wheel, he said, "That can't possibly be your car." "Well, it is. Well, then where's the dent in the top of it?" And he had him on that one because they, those guys spent a lot of time upside down there, out on the beach, but then all he had to do was push them right back over on their wheels. So loss of three people there. And I know we've got a lot of talk going on about soccer. It's a great thing. We've got three exemplary soccer programs here. I'm very proud of the coaches and of course, the players, but also the parents. But I just want to remind you that basketball season's coming along and we're going to have probably three high-achieving, remarkable basketball teams here in Dare County with First Flight, Manio, and of course, Cape Hatteras. And Coaches vs. Cancer is starting to get a nationwide reputation. It's really good for this area. The hospitality industry turns out for that. A lot of these city kids and urban kids, some who have never even seen the ocean, they're going to be out here, we're going to treat them like kings. You're going to see some really, really good national basketball there for kids that are eighteen and younger. And a lot of these kids are going to be playing Division One basketball. And so keep your eyes on, on, on this winter sports program. I don't mean to single out basketball, but we have other girls' basketballs. We also have three overachieving, in my opinion, girls' basketball teams here in Dare County. They're very competitive, but also, you know, they, they get along really well. They all share each other, the pictures on, on social media. And that's one thing I admire about here in Dare County. None of these schools think that they're better than the others and I admire the respect that goes on with, within Dare County sports programs. Just lastly, I want to say just one thing about some of the old timers that we're losing and I hope this is not taken the wrong way because I've got three kids. But when you look at some of the citizens that we're losing, they don't call it the greatest generation for nothing. And I hope the baby boomers can hang in there and carry some of that legacy. But, you know, when you look at some of the conduct that goes on going forward, and I know I'm going to sound like an old fuddy duddy here and everything, but I'm a little concerned about the direction of our country going forward. I just hope that there's no major...
A little concerned?
Huh? Well, Rob, your turn's next. You can pick up on me if you want. But it's, I really do admire that generation. They, they, the work ethic that they had, I mean, even Captain Johnny Williams here, I mean, up until the, up until this past week where he physically could not eat anymore, he was ninety-two, but three weeks ago, he was out there, you know, in his garden, working and he was active on the water as well. So we'll see what happens going forward, but that's what I got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ross?
Yeah, I'll follow up on it, Danny. Just attend any one of the Saving Lives Task Force meetings and listen to Wally or, you know, the group there. Honest to God, a little concerned. I'm with you, pal. I am major concerned between external stimuli, social media, pressures that kids face in school. I'm looking back at Sheila sitting in the back of the room. I know she and her group deal with this a lot. And yeah, I would echo, lots concerned. Number one, looking forward to, this is a big week. It's Veterans Day coming up and the Virginia Tillet Center will be hosting a Veterans Day luncheon on Wednesday, the eighth, about noon. I will be attending. I look forward to that. That should be a very good event. And Chairman, you touched on this initially, the wall that heals. As I said, on two, around two-thirty on the fourteenth, it will be coming over the Causeway and arriving in Nags Head. And it's kind of a cool sight to see the road lined with people cheering it on and, and recognizing it.
Sure.
Yeah, it's kind of neat. Four o'clock that day on the fourteenth, Bill isn't here, Bill Coleman, our Shelter Director, but we're going to have a ribbon cutting at the shelter for their new surgical operating theater, which we were generous enough to help fund with the equipment they need.
What's that date again?
This is the fourteenth, Tuesday, a week from tomorrow. And again, it's two-thirty for the Causeway. I'll be at the ribbon cutting at four o'clock at the shelter. On the sixteenth, there will be the opening ceremony for the Wall That Heals, Soundside Park in Nags Head, ten AM. I plan to attend that as well. And then on Friday evening, the seventeenth, there's a lot going on this week, or next week and rightfully so. There will be a candlelight vigil ceremony honoring veterans, especially those from Dare County, also at Soundside at six PM and that is November seventeenth. And the last thing, I've spoken to Danny and county manager about this. We received notice of a safety issue, a pond on an abandoned old nine-hole golf course in Frisco that is a retention pond, fully bulk-headed. And I think Sheila, we may have asked you guys to get involved to look at what safety issues are at play because any person or animal or thing that goes into a fully bulk-headed pond is not going to be able to get out without a ramp or some access out. So I'm formally asking that we look into that and remedy that safety issue. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Done that as well.
Yeah, thank you, Danny.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got one thing that I kind of wanted to bring up that's, I think it's just, just going to be a housekeeping issue on our agenda under public comments. It lists in there, you participating, participants provide time on the agenda for every scheduled meeting for public comment. The very last sentence in that still shows that mask and social distancing is required. I think we're, I think we're over the pandemic. Can we clean that up and take that out? That'd be my first thing. Like I said, I think that was just, that would just probably be a housekeeping issue.
Mr. Chairman, could I get the floor one more time?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
This is a topic relative to the Albemarle Commission on which board I sit. Apparently, there was an internet, an incident about a week ago, an altercation between our director, Mr. Michael Irvin, and an outside contractor that was a bit more than an altercation. The matter's been referred to an outside law firm to review and understand exactly what happened and Mr. Irvin is currently on paid administrative leave pending the outcome of that investigation. I don't have more. I know that's leaving everybody hanging, what happened. I honestly don't know exactly what happened. As I get the answers and details, I'll update the board. Sorry, I forgot.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else, Commissioner House?
Yes, please. As Dare County is aware and all of us are aware, and we all mourn the loss of Commissioner Jim Tobin over the past few years, I've been able to work very closely with him with the Miss Katie project and not only securing funds through state, he and I spent several trips back and forth to rally on that and several phone calls, plus also with the design and aspect of Miss Katie to make sure she made the requirements. And also going with him, several trips down to Louisiana just to supervise the construction phase. He is not only a strong advocate of Dare County, a very close and dear friend, and I, along with my fellow commissioners, deeply mourn his loss. And Mr. Chairman, I would, I do appreciate you bringing up my father-in-law. He was a very special man and if you'll indulge me a little bit, I know he was not a Dare County resident, but his, his daughter is your Register of Deeds and my father-in-law. And he was a thirty-year United States Marine Corps, Marine Master Gunner Sergeant. He was a car guy. He loved a quarter-mile racetracks and classic cars. He had two classic cars in his garage right now, along with his race car. He was a pilot, but not for the Marine Corps. He was a pilot because he loved flying and aviation personally. Not only did he have three different aircraft throughout his life, but he was also a crew chief, crew, not crew chief, but he was on the crew for the fastest biplane in the United States, the Phantom. And every time the Phantom took to the skies with Reno Air Races, it broke another speed Our, on behalf of the family, I would like to say thank you to many of the Dare County residents who reached out to Cheryl and myself and gave their condolences. And I thank you and that's one of the reasons why we live here is because the community supports each other even when we're down. With the motorcycles, with Mr. Chairman here, I'll be falling behind him on my Jeep. And Mr. Chairman, if it is cold, I will let you know. I've got heat in my Jeep.
Steve, can you enlighten us, maybe, Mr. Chairman? Approximately how many cycles, motorcycles and/or Jeeps may be involved in this escort?
Four hundred.
Four hundred.
Four hundred. You get that, Mary Helen?
Got it.
Four hundred. This is no small thing. So thank you, gentlemen.
Now, also keep in mind with this escort, it's, it's not a celebratory parade. It is a somber memorial heading through our county and for the, the honor and respect of every name that's on that wall and for every veteran who ever served in Vietnam, just like my father-in-law. Our day in history, in eighteen sixty, Abraham Lincoln was elected President of the United States of America. And on one of our favorite parts of any county commissioner meeting, meet Cletus, our pet of the week.
Our pet of the week this week is Cletus. Cletus was brought in as a stray but has the personality of a house cat. This handsome gentleman is about two years old and loves playing with wand toys and loves sunbathing. To adopt Cletus or foster one of our other animals, come visit us Monday through Friday at our shelter located in Manio. For more information, visit our website at obxspca.org or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook
So please run down to the SPCA and give Cletus a forever home. And you might want to get there before one of Dorothy's staff members gets down there because she seems to pick up quite a few of them. So with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Flight Chairman?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. As always, like to recognize our service pin recipients, Wendy, Carol, Laura, Ashley, Doug and Heather. You know, we went a few months and didn't have anybody and all of a sudden, we, we playing catch-up. We had a hundred and fifteen years of service to Dare County and also to our Employee of the Month, John Morris. Really appreciate it. As again, we say it every time, the county could not work without them. Then several things mentioned about the wall that heals, I just want to clean up a few things. We said that it is arriving on Tuesday, November fourteenth and if folks can line the pathway and wave American flags as it comes through, that would be great. If you don't have a flag, just wave your hand, but just show some support. The setup will occur on Wednesday, November fifteenth with a soft opening that afternoon. There will be an opening ceremony on Thursday, November sixteenth at ten AM. There's an admiral speaking as well as several other folks, Vietnam veterans, will be speaking at that opening ceremony as well as our chairman. As a reminder, the wall will be open from the time it opens on Tuesday after, Wednesday afternoon, rather. It will be open twenty-four hours a day. A lot of veterans like to come out in the evening when they're by themselves, but it will be open twenty-four hours a day. The candlelight ceremony was mentioned that will be on Friday. One important thing, and I wanted to mention this for sure, there's, there's been several mentions of it in printed media, but regarding transportation, particularly from Hatteras Island, it will be provided Thursday, Friday and Saturday. And people can contact Dare County Transportation if you're interested in getting on one of these buses. That number is two-five-two-four-seven-five-five-six-four-zero. And if you are interested in using one of the several shuttles that will run twice a day, you can find out what the pickup points are and the time of that. Those vans, at least one of those vans will be wheelchair capable, so if, if somebody is confined to a wheelchair, they can still get to the wall that heals if necessary, if necessary using that type of, of transportation.
necessary using that type of, of transportation. On Saturday, November 18th, there will be a Vietnam Veterans Walk to the Wall that will be at 11 a.m. at the event site itself, and veterans can, will gather there and proceed out to the wall. Just a reminder to everyone to visit darenc.gov/wall, and you can find a ton of information regarding the wall that heals that will be here next week, eight days from today. It's going to be something. On Thursday, October 26th, the Fourth Saving Lives Task Force Faith Summit was held at St. Andrews by the Sea. It was very well-attended once again. We had a really good program and speakers on, on substance use disorder. People shared their life experiences with that. This was organized by the Faith-Based Subcommittee of the Saving Lives Task Force chaired by Ms. Bonnie Bennett, who does a fantastic job in, in getting that organized. And I just wanted to say thank you for all the folks who participated in that. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. I had, Wally caught me in the hall one morning prior to his Saving Lives Task Force meeting, and, because I was over here conducting some business and had a little bit of extra spare time, and I attended Saving's Lives Task Force. The amount of people and the talent on that board is incredible. Probably one of the most informative meetings that I have ever attended, and to see what they're doing is just incredible. And I shared that with them and continue to echo that for me, Vice Chairman, because it's, it's incredible group of people doing what they're doing in our county.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the temperature for the ride is 57 degrees and plenty of sunshine.
Ooh, I better dress warm because you're running 55, 6 miles an hour on that motorcycle.
It'll be like 30.
Gets a little chilly.
That's Georgia flip-flop. I'll be thinking about sweating with the heat on.
I got enough heat coming off of them pipes to keep my legs warm anyway. Other than that, the upper body gets a little chilly. Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us?
I don't. You all have covered every item that I had on my list.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Our Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, you have anything else for us today?
Just real quick, those Phase 2 EMS bids, which is Manio Use Center, Kitty Hawk EMS, and Men's Harbor EMS, the first open is November 28th, and the second opening is December 12th.
Super. Thank you. All right, with that being said, I need a motion to adjourn until December 4.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House, seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Bateman and Vice Chairman. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.